All right. It's 10 o'clock, so I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Board of Supervisors on April 26, 2013, and ask you to stand for a moment of silence. We'll just keep doing that for a while. All right, Maria, could you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we're here for one timed item. This item is, A, discussion of access to law enforcement information systems, and, B, discussion and consideration of options for this board to provide efficient and cooperative access to said system by all law enforcement agencies to ensure public safety. And I'd like to begin by stating the obvious, that there are three board members present, which means that any decisions made by the board have to be unanimous. I'd also like to state that this board is very much aware the sheriff is a constitutional officer, and that we are not in a position to tell the sheriff how to do law enforcement. I'd like to suggest, there's a pretty passionate crowd here, maybe just a show of hands, how many of you believe in the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? So we have more in common than we realize. The ground rules would be that we focus on the issue at hand. Many of the things that we hear are outside of the Board of Supervisors' purview, and so we need to focus on what the Board of Supervisors', areas in Board of Supervisors' jurisdiction. This meeting was precipitated by a letter we received. This mic is cutting in and out. Anyway, this meeting was precipitated by a letter we received from the city of Lakeport that basically shared their concerns that public safety may be at risk because of some access to the law enforcement systems, and that the sheriff has provided a temporary solution, but it's not, as they stated in their letter, they don't believe that it is an effective solution to the problem that they have in accessing the information for public safety. So I guess what the best thing to do at this point in time is just to hear from the sheriff, who I just gave a copy of the letter to, and Frank, maybe you can just come up and just sort of set the stage for what actions have been taken and what you can share with the public at this point.
Good morning. I'm not exactly sure what the board is looking to do or accomplish here. I've just read the letter. My actions are part of my continuing efforts to control the dissemination of sensitive law enforcement information that is held in the custody of the sheriff's office, and it's my responsibility to control. This procedure of tightening the constraints on the RIMS, Report Information Management System, did not begin today, or a week ago, or a month ago. It began essentially the moment I took office. As the board is well aware, when I did take office, I did an immediate audit on the RIMS system because I had grave concerns that there was a lot of information, police reports, personal information on members of the public, that was out there that should not be out there.
Sheriff Rivera, can you stop for just a moment? You did ask a question, and I wanted to state the answer to that and my view, so that you can frame your response accordingly. The reason for this meeting is because of the letter of the city of Lakeport, and also there have been a number of things in the public that have the public concerned about public safety.
No, I under-
So if we could just, mainly the purpose of this meeting is to get the information out on public safety, so folks know that-
Well, if you would just bear with me for a moment, I'd like to frame this so that you and the public are aware of what I'm doing as part of my position-
Fair enough.
-as the elected sheriff. So this control, auditing, monitoring of the RIMS system has been going on for quite a long time. There were many, many, many logins and passwords that were inappropriate, and unfortunately, even with my best efforts and the efforts of my staff, we're still finding situations that should not be occurring, and we address and correct them as we find them. On the 18th of this month, I received my latest update of how many logins and passwords are contained within RIMS that allow access to RIMS. That number was 225, 225 people with access logins. I looked through that list, and I made some determinations, and then I acted on those determinations in my capacity as sheriff. Now I'll turn my direction directly to the Lakeport Police Department. I read the letter that you just handed me a few moments ago, and essentially the letter states that we have cut off RIMS' access to Lakeport, that we have breached the contract for dispatch services, and for those that do not know, the Lake County Sheriff's Office provides dispatch services under contract to the Lakeport Police Department, and we continue to do so, and that my workaround for not providing access to the Lake County Sheriff's RIMS system to Lakeport Police is inadequate. So, first of all, there's absolutely no public safety concerns involved in this. I dispute that, and I would like to hear, because I have yet to hear, any specifics concerning that. Public safety and officer safety is a really nice buzzword to throw out there, but what are the facts, what are the circumstances, and exactly what are you alleging concerning public safety and the officer safety issues? Lakeport Police has four contractual obligations with the Lake County Sheriff's Office. I'm sure the board has seen it. It's available through public records, but essentially they are to provide dispatch services to the Lakeport Police Department. They're an attachment A of this document. I can go through them one by one, or I can paraphrase them, whatever you prefer.
My preference would be paraphrasing, but-
Okay, okay. They're reasonably short. Receive and request for police services, dispatch city police to those requests accordingly. Well, we're doing that right now. As a matter of fact, I was listening to calls. There's a recent call nearby here where two Lakeport Police officers were dispatched by our dispatch services. They were given all the information that was necessary for them to complete their job. It says, "Monitor and receive, transmit radio communications for the city of Lakeport." Again, we're doing that. There's absolutely no reason to believe that we're not, and as a matter of fact, I was in my radio car, listening to the patrol radio, and I heard several calls coming back and forth from Lakeport Police just this morning. Operate, maintain the city police wanted persons file. We have and continue to do that. There's no issue. It says, "Provide police with access to statewide and nationwide crime computer networks upon request, i.e. KLETS and NCIC." We do that. When a Lakeport Police officer requests information, what's called a 27 on an individual, we run the 27 and provide them that information. When they want a plate run through DMV, we run the plate and provide them that information. If they need criminal information from NCIC, we do that also. So to the extent that there is some allegation that we, that I, or and/or the sheriff's office is in breach of contract, it's just simply not true. The contract is here, and it speaks for itself.
Right, well, and we're not really in a position to talk about the contract itself, but what the issue that we're hoping to understand in this special meeting is whether public safety is at risk, and you took action to limit access, or was it shut down access?
The access to RIMS was completely shut down, and let me just explain how this works. Lake County Sheriff's Office has its own RIMS system that's maintained by the Lake County Sheriff's Office, and information is put in there that's very sensitive, including information on child victims and other things that the general public would not want released to just anyone, and by the way, it is a crime to release it unless there's a right to know and a need to know. That's very clear. And that information furthermore is required by state law to be protected from release to individuals that don't have a right to know or need to know. The Lakeport Police Department also maintains its own RIMS system. I do not have access to that RIMS system, nor do I want access to that RIMS system, nor do I feel that I need access to that RIMS system. We have our own system that I do have access and control of. The way that this was set up through this dispatch contract, which by the way, this is not even mentioned in the contract, but it's a courtesy that I agree with because I believe that the Lakeport officers need it in order to complete their report, which is a ministerial task, not a public safety task, is that our CAD system, which stands for Computer Assisted Dispatch, records the calls for service that are issued to the Lakeport Police Department. That CAD system then loads it into RIMS, the Report Information Management System, and the purpose of allowing RIMS access to the Lakeport Police Department was for them, and this is a purpose that was acknowledged just a few days ago by the chief himself, was to allow them to access the CAD system so that when they got back to the station, they could use that information to complete their reports, and the chief also augmented that by saying that he uses the CAD system if there's a Public Records Act request and he needs to look through to see whatever his officers may have done, or to comply with other ministerial tasks that he's required to do, and to monitor what his units are doing on a day-to-day basis. And I agree with all of that. That's certainly reasonable. I have any issues with it at all. The problem really stems from the fact that in giving access to the CAD, which isn't in the contract, but nonetheless has been historically done, and I have no intentions of discontinuing it, and they still have to this day, and I talked to my dispatch manager last night, and they're still receiving the necessary information from the CAD system. The problem really stems from having access to the entire RIMS system in order just to access CAD. And we developed a workaround. There have been some glitches, but we still continue to provide them the information. According to my dispatch manager, I've been in constant contact with her and the assistant manager throughout this, and making sure that they are getting the very same information that they purportedly were accessing through our RIMS system. Now, after having had several discussions two days ago with Chief Rasmussen, and being absolutely assured that the only reason that he needed access, he and his officers, I should say, needed access to the RIMS system was for CAD, and having been assured that his officers had not accessed CAD, I'm sorry, not accessed RIMS beyond CAD, and also being told by the chief that they didn't need any more than CAD, but still, without explanation, being held to task on why can't I have RIMS? Because my question to the chief was, well, if you can get your CAD information, which is what you're entitled to, through a different source, then why do you need RIMS? That question remains unanswered up until this morning, up until today. But the day before yesterday, my curiosity being alerted, I began the process of running some audits, some specific audits, because it is a cumbersome task to audit this RIMS system. You have to go into RIMS Report and bounce back and forth between two separate operating systems, and then you have to put in the initials of the login of the individual who you want to look at to see what records they have accessed, and then you have to go back to RIMS and look specifically at those dates and times, or at the person screen that they had accessed, and then go into the audit section of that part of the computer and figure out what they looked at, and then from there it becomes a guessing game. Was it necessary, was it not? With my officers, I have a pretty good idea. I know that what they're investigating, what they're doing, you know, why they would need to look at a specific individual, or a specific picture, or a specific list of evidence. With an outside agency, it's a guessing game. But in any event, when I looked at this audit, what I discovered immediately was that in fact, the information that was given to me by Chief Rasmussen was misrepresented, that from January 1st, which is where I just limited it to a four-month period, I started January 1st of '13 through April 24th, I believe was the date, or 23rd, that I ran the query, there have been hundreds, hundreds of inquiries made by Lakeport Police officers into CAD, I mean into RIMS, that had nothing to do with CAD. They were people screens, pictures, and other screens that I had been assured was not the case and should not be the case, because again, I'm ultimately responsible for-
So you're saying that you failed, you discovered that there was inappropriate access to RIMS?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Is it, have you, and I guess, Anita, you're going to have to stop me if I'm crossing the line as a Board of Supervisor member, but I'm just curious, are you filing charges? Is it, was it a crime that took place?
No, because frankly, I don't have any way to verify whether or not these accesses were legitimate, because these officers are not under my control. I can't, first of all, I can't open an internal affairs investigation in any of this, because Lakeport Police is independent, and I don't have any authority to open internal affairs investigation.
So it's possible that Chief Rasmussen was mistaken, that they actually used more than the CAD system to do their jobs?
Well, Chief Rasmussen himself had 12 inquiries from January 1st through April 23rd.
Right, so it's possible, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is it's possible that these were legitimate inquiries as opposed to for some other reason?
Well, it's possible, except in one particular instance that I was looking at this, and again, you know, this is some of, you know, that's audit paperwork that I brought with me, just to give you some idea of the Herculean task of auditing these inquiries, because in, you know, hundreds of inquiries, and then you go to hundreds of other pages, you have to determine what computer terminal they came from, which is a totally separate inquiry. But I can, I could speak to this. There was one particular inquiry that really troubled me, and that was this. It was, and I can't name names because there are Pobart protections involved here, so I won't do that. I'm not going to violate anybody's Pobart protections, but I can discuss it generally under the penal code, and I did research that last night, and this officer had accessed his wife, because when I looked, it was the same last name, and then I started seeing that there were several first names, not just the one that was confirmed by me, according to RIMS, to be his wife, and then changed certain information in that entry. Now that is wholly inappropriate, and I did bring that to the attention in an email that I wrote to Chief Rasmussen the night before last.
Go ahead, Rob. Because I want to get some clarity on, because you're using this term a lot, and I just want to find out what really inappropriate means. Where are the rules for the use of RIMS? Where can we access those?
They are-
Because I know there's a difference between inappropriate, in fact, you said there were, your words exactly were, many, 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 many inappropriate uses, and then you followed that up by saying there was no way to verify what the use, what they were looking at, and if it was inappropriate or not, so I-
There is a way to verify it. It's very laborious and time-consuming. You would have to bring in the individual and ask him, why were you looking at this particular report? Why were you looking at this particular person's screen? What does, how does that tie into your law enforcement capacity? There's an absolute way of verifying what I said. It's impossible for me to verify what Lakeport Police has done-
Right.
...because I have no access and no authority to question-
Okay, and I misunderstood. I guess I thought you'd already verified that, because you did say it was inappropriate, so I assumed it-
Well, no, it is inappropriate to be running your wife.
You said, "many, many, many, many inappropriate," hundreds is what you said.
Yeah, no, that's exactly right, and let me clarify that. It's inappropriate that they be accessing this information at all. That wasn't the agreement.
Okay. Do you have the rules for that?
They had, hang on just a second, could you, if you allow me to finish, I'd be happy to explain to you, but if you're not going to listen, then we're not going to get anywhere.
Well, no, yeah, I'm looking forward to hearing what your answer is.
Well, then allow me to speak, please.
Yeah, go ahead, continue.
The contract for dispatch services was structured, and not by me, by the previous administration, to allow RIMS access so that Lakeport Police could access CAD inquiries Any other access would be inappropriate, and there were hundreds of them. Therein comes the many, many, many statement. Now, you asked me another question, and let me respond before I forget. This is all codified in Penal Code Section 13300 through 13305, specifically, if you allow me to quote this, it's short, 13302 of the Penal Code. An employee of a local criminal justice agency who willingly furnishes a record or information obtained from a record to a person who is not authorized by law to receive the record or information is guilty of a misdemeanor. You want me to continue, or do you want?
Why don't we, hold on a sec.
Yeah, because I haven't heard where you said that that had happened. So somebody did actually access records and then give them to somebody else? Is that what you're alleging?
The problem here is that we don't know what they've done, okay? And even to look at these records without a need to know or a right to know, which is under 11, excuse me, I'm working from memory, because I don't have that here, I think it's 11075 of the Penal Code. You have to have a right to know first, that's the first hurdle, Supervisor. The second hurdle is a need to know. Both of those, not one or the other, both must be met before accessing this information.
So, Rob, excuse me, but let me interject here. An old saying in business is that when you start quoting contract language to each other, the relationship has pretty much gone sideways, right?
Fair enough.
So the question is, we have here a letter from Lakeport, and regardless of what the contract says, the issue, what the issue around this is they're saying they need access to this system, and we'll hear from them in a moment. You're saying that inappropriate action took place, so therefore you shut off access, and now you're allowing access to certain information that was in the contract. My question for you is, is there a way to sit at the table and figure out what it is they need beyond CAD and work up protocols so that this doesn't happen again? Is that why you shut off access in order for that to happen, or is it access just shut off forever?
No. Well, first of all, I have assurances that I'm relying on to tell you this from Chief Rasmussen, that he doesn't need access to RIMS beyond CAD access. That was the entire issue.
But that's not what the letter says.
Well, I understand. I just read the letter this morning, but I mean-
And we'll hear his version of it here in a minute.
I don't believe that they need access to RIMS. They have their own RIMS system.
Okay, well, they obviously believe they-
And by the way, I'm sorry, I don't mean to stop you, but by the way, there is, there is an interoperability agreement between RIMS users and with us, it's Clear Lake Police, City of Lakeport, LCSO, Calistoga Police, St. Helena Police, and there was maybe one or two others. And this interoperability agreement allows you to access RIMS through that agreement, but you have to go a different route, and the information is limited. And I'm not saying that in any particular case, if any officer, any law enforcement officer comes to me and says, "We need information on this individual, or this situation, or, you know, anything like that, even beyond the interoperability agreement, which provides for some access and some cross-use of RIMS between local agencies," which is, by the way, was set up because that's the proper procedure, okay? I'm not saying if somebody comes to me and says that they need specific information, I'm going to deny them that information. I just like the opportunity to evaluate for myself whether or not it in fact meets a criteria of needs to know, you know? Is it legitimate? But to have these passwords, these enormous amount of logins and passwords just out there, and then expect my staff and myself to continually, you know, without the ability to reduce this, because realize, this list of 255 people was reduced substantially already, and every time that I reduce it, there's always a bit of a dust-up. The first dust-up was the biggest one, but they continue. But I believe that they have alternatives that they should be exercising that are in place for a reason, like this interoperability agreement. They want to access our RIMS system, they can do it, but they have to go through that system, and that system audits, and that system keeps track, and that's not something where I am taking personal responsibility for issuing passwords and logins.
So if I sum up what you're saying, just to make sure I understand it, you're saying that you don't have, currently, the reason you had to shut it down is you don't have in place the ability to understand or know how the system's being used, and you would rather it go through a mechanism so the audit trail is clear?
Well, that's not the primary reason. The primary reason is this is too burdensome to continue to have these large amounts of sign-ins when they're absolutely unnecessary. If you, we could take their need for CAD and satisfy that need through a system that doesn't require me to audit all these other things, and it makes it much more efficient.
Well, I want to follow up with your, maybe, you know, to try to find a solution. It may be cumbersome for you to have that many people in there, but it's no different than other counties that are much larger than ours that actually do it, and actually Mendocino County, they allow all the cities to have RIMS access. In fact, right now, they're waiting for DOJ approval to allow the tribal police at Hopland to be able to have RIMS access as well. So it's not cumbersome for others, and I don't, I'm wondering if there's a process or a system in place that they have that maybe we should talk to them and see if it works out, because they not only have the cooperation with all the other departments, if they need it, and you're saying they can get it anyway through CAD, then why can't they get it anyway through RIMS? I don't understand why the, what the holdup is. And then, let me just further this, because I was thinking about this last night, that maybe a solution would be, well, first of all, if you found a documented instance of, and I haven't heard you say it, but I've read you quoted saying that there was illegal access to some records, and so so far I haven't heard anything that was done illegally, other than, you know, an officer who illegally gained access prior to you becoming sheriff, and he was fired over it. So I know that that has happened in the past, but I haven't heard anything in, you know, you're into your third year yet, and so far I haven't seen anybody prosecuted for anything that's alleged.
Well, prosecution and doing it illegally are much different. You could speak to the prosecutor who's standing behind me if you want to know about prosecution.
And you also have-
But I have absolutely stated that it's illegal.
Excuse me, I'm not done.
Okay, fine.
I want you to finish, so. So if you were to have an instance, the rare occasion where there was a questionable access, you could, to me, it would make sense to form a legitimate task force of representatives from each of the agencies that are actually involved in using the RIMS, and then having them have a system in place where they can actually go and look at that, and if it is illegal, there needs to be somebody prosecuted. If there's illegal access to information shared by private parties, then I want to see somebody arrested over it. You know, I would- You know, I would, I would be happy to volunteer my records to open up publicly for all these folks to review and see if anybody's accessed my information illegally as a start, so.
So what you're telling me is you want to run the sheriff's office?
I didn't, I don't, I don't believe I told you that.
Well, you are, you are.
Actually Frank, I'm just making a recommendation.
You're making a recommendation, but, but it's more than a recommendation. I was elected by the people of this county to run the sheriff's office. One of my duties as an elected official is to make sure that the people are protected. I mean, I don't think anybody's going to dispute that. Now, there's many ways to harm people, and certainly releasing records on people that should not be released is a tremendous harm.
Has that been done?
And that's what I'm trying to prevent. Now, if you have a different way of doing that, then there's an electoral process that would allow you, if you want to run, or whoever you want to support, to be the sheriff. But I am the sheriff, and I make these decisions.
Okay. Hang on, hang on. That's true. And I, no, I do not want to run the sheriff's department. I would like the sheriff to run it in an appropriate manner. And if, if we had a, say, a citizens' review board, for example, maybe, maybe you could make, they can make recommendations on how to do this. I don't know.
So I don't think anybody's disputing you're running the sheriff's office?
Thank you.
Under the ground.
I don't think anybody's disputing that you make the decisions. I'm going to ask you the question. Are you open to suggestions if things aren't working?
Oh, I've listened to, I've had multiple conversations with Chief Rasmussen, and I'll listen to anything. But I'll listen to anything that makes sense that isn't going to compromise the goal that I have of maintaining, and this is, this is a personal goal, but it's also a mandate in the Penal Code and a moral and ethical obligation to maintain these records in the best fashion possible so that they're not inappropriately used or released.
So, and so there may be, I mean, and Supervisor Brown, we have to, we have to sort of sift through some of the emotion of this sometimes, but the, there's a suggestion buried in all of this that maybe there is a way to provide the protocols and some process so that if records are accessed inappropriately, there's a mechanism to deal with that. It sounds like there isn't today, that it's just too over, you know, too many people accessing too many passwords out there, et cetera.
Well, and, and the, and the other problem is that, again, when you issue passwords to outside agencies, which is not, and I don't know about Mendocino County, and frankly, this isn't Mendocino County. I have to run my office the way I feel appropriate. I don't know if, if what Mr. Brown is talking about is, is the interoperability, which Clear Lake, Lakeport, and Lake County sheriffs all have access to right now, so that may be what he's talking about. I really don't know. But I'd be happy to entertain anything that's put in front of me, as I, as I always am. But it has to be reasonable, and it has to meet both the legal criteria and the criteria that I set for the sheriff's office.
Well, and I, that's all I was doing was making a recommendation, and you don't seem to be that receptive to it. And it's just.
It's covered from you though, Rob.
Well, that's true. I know, I understand that. It's all, it's all in who's making the delivery as to whether or not he'll accept it. So I'm open to anybody that, that he'll listen to to make the recommendation, that we do something where there's actually a cooperative effort instead. I mean, you know, for example, I, I do appreciate the audit aspect of this, but I would have to ask the question, who's auditing you?
Well, apparently you're trying to, but I mean.
No, I'm just asking.
Auditing me for what? What are you, what are you talking about? Auditing me on what, for RIMS?
Yeah, who checks, who checks who's, you know?
The same people that audit the rest? Everybody. This is a general audit.
Everybody.
In our office, we have at least two people that have that capability. And one woman's sitting in this office, in this, in this room right now, and the other one is at the office. You're saying who's auditing me? If you have a problem with it, talk to the Department of Justice. If you have some allegation against me, make it specific, please, except not these like name-calling and.
I would completely agree, and let's not go, let's not go down, let's not go down that road. Let's stick with.
Just a random audit.
Let's stick with public safety today. We have Supervisor Comstock, and then I just, Frank, it sounds like you're open to hearing what people's issues are today, so we're going to.
That's what I'm here for today, and I'm also here to make sure that the public understands and does not get any varnished or spun version of what's going on here. I've heard a lot of stuff out there in the media that is absolutely not true, or half-truths, or completely hollow allegations, this whole public safety deal. There's been no, nothing specific, not one instance where they say, oh, this officer, this happened, and this, not one. So I'm, I'm here waiting to hear that, and I'll stand back up here and address it, and it's my responsibility, the responsibility ends, ends at the end of my feet.
Supervisor Comstock, you have a question?
A couple of quick questions.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, those records that you have right there beside you, audit trail, is that what that is?
Some of it is, some of it is. With a computer, the location of the computer, there's many different aspects.
Are those names and what, are those confidential records?
Yes, sir.
Is that appropriate for those to be here in a public setting like this, not locked up?
Unless you're going to tear them out of my hands, yes, they are.
Well, that might happen, but I find that.
I certainly hope not.
I'm quite concerned with that. I spent quite a bit of time in the Navy, and I had a top-secret special intelligence clearance. And so I know the, I know and understand very well that how information needs to be kept. And a couple of things, need to know supersedes right to know. Having had a top-secret special intelligence clearance, I had the right to know a lot of stuff, but I could only access that which I had the need to know. And then on national security basis, there's, first, there's confidential, serious, and grave. Those are the, those are the stages of it. But I'm, I'm quite concerned, and I understand, I don't understand why you would have brought those here. If they're confidential records, they shouldn't have been brought into a public forum like this. I find that that's probably not a good idea. I'm not trying to run the sheriff's office. I'm giving you my opinion as a citizen of the County of Lake and as a supervisor. I don't think that those should have been brought here.
Well, I work weekends, and I take these records home because I have to. There aren't enough hours in the day, okay? I, I bring them here because if I need to refer to a number, I have them here for my use. They're confidential records, they're in my control, nobody's going to take them away from me, sir, I guarantee you that. The second thing is I appreciate your Navy protocol, but that's not the protocol for the Department of Justice or these criminal information records. That you have, before you can have the need to know, you must have the right to know.
I stated that.
No, you stated the exact opposite.
You have to have the right to know first.
That's correct, okay.
But the need to know that supersedes the right to know.
The need to know supersedes the right to know? No, it does not, sir.
No, it's, Sheriff, you're trying to twist the words.
No, actually, I think the definition of supersedes, what he means is, what he means is that need to, you need right to know before you can get need to know.
That's exactly right.
But in order to access a record, you have to have need to know.
That's absolutely right. Oh, no, wait a minute. You have to have both. You have, you have to have the right to know first, because every.
You guys are vehemently agreeing, by the way.
Yeah, I understand. Just want to make it clear.
Sheriff, let's move on.
All right.
No, you're agreeing. You are in agreement on that. You have anything else to add at this point, or you want to?
No, ma'am, I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
I think Chief Rasmussen wants to.
Chief Rasmussen, or?
Actually, yes, City Manager Soreya wants to speak before I do.
First of all, I wanted to thank Madam Chair and members of the board for holding this meeting so quickly after our letter to you to, for today. Also, I, as we all watch the media and see the tragedies that are happening with our first responders and our police department, and I feel that those that are keeping us safe need to have all the tools in the box they possibly can to keep us safe. And I have the utmost respect for Chief Rasmussen and the police officers of the City of Lakeport. And I, I do know that if the sheriff had come to our chief and said he believes there was a problem, and there was any complaints, which he's never had since he's been in, in office, that our department would have done an investigation and would have, we take that very seriously, and would have done whatever was necessary to get to the bottom of that. We've had those records, we've had the access to those records for decades here, and so a call would have been the respectful thing to do, and I know that my staff would have responded to the sheriff, as they've always respected the office of the sheriff. And again, I just want to thank you for, for having this meeting so quickly, responding to us. And I'll let the sheriff, I'll let the chief explain the details of the safety and how that is unsafe for our officers. Thank you.
Before I get started, excuse me, I was losing my voice last night, so I'm hoping that, that I can get through this today. Before I get, get started on the prepared statement that I have regarding all these issues, I just want to say that, you know, it's difficult for me to sit here and listen to the sheriff make these, these allegations, particularly now when I hear him alluding to the fact that we may have committed a crime. There's been no investigation on any of this. There's, there's no evidence that, that any inappropriate activity has occurred at this point yet. Anyway, first of all, I want to thank the Lake County Board of Supervisors and the County of Lake for acting on the City of Lakeport's request to immediately take up this serious public safety matter consideration in the interest of the health, safety, and welfare of our communities. As you are aware by now, on Tuesday, April 23rd of this year, Lakeport Police Management became aware that Lake County Sheriff Frank Rivero unilaterally ordered the shutdown of all of Lakeport Police Department's access to the Lake County Sheriff's Office RIMS system. This action was taken with absolutely no notice whatsoever to me or any members of my staff. We only learned of this after our staff was unable to access the system in the course of their official duty to access necessary information. Lieutenant Jason Ferguson contacted the sheriff's administrative office to inquire about the problem and was advised that we had been, in fact, shut down by order of Sheriff Rivero, and if we had questions related to the issue, we were directed to contact him personally. I contacted the sheriff and first spoke to him via telephone at approximately 1,400 hours in the presence of Lieutenant Ferguson. The sheriff confirmed that our RIMS access had been shut down and advised it was a matter of an audit and controlling access to the system. I asked the sheriff if any of my people had done anything wrong or inappropriate, and he stated, no, absolutely not. I negotiated with the sheriff to reactivate access for me, Lieutenant Ferguson, and my two sergeants until the issue with the future access from my department could be worked out. The sheriff also said that he would have Lakeport Police call detailed information placed into messages sent by dispatch from our RIMS, for, excuse me, from his RIMS system to my RIMS system. Since that time, we have checked with officers and found the information is not coming as he stated it would. Even if the information was coming, as Sheriff Rivero stated, it would not, it would be completely ineffective and not cover what we need to conduct operations and provide for officer and community safety. I also had several other telephone conversations with Sheriff Rivero, the last of which I told him I believed he was endangering the safety of my officers and the members of my community. I also followed that telephone call with an email requesting that he immediately restore RIMS access for all of my staff, and reminded him that he stated there were no allegations of my staff doing anything inappropriate, and advised him that I believed his actions were inappropriate. In an email on April 24th, I advised the sheriff that I would not discuss this issue any further with him on the telephone, and requested that our RIMS access be turned back on by the end of the business day. We would only then meet with him in person, along with my appropriate staff, to discuss any future changes to our access. Later in the afternoon, I learned from a local media outlet that Sheriff Rivero was now accusing my staff of 600 violations of inappropriate use of the RIMS system. Shortly thereafter, I received an email response from Sheriff Rivero advising that my office had hundreds of inappropriate examples of access to the system by members of my staff without justification or permission from him. He further alleged that my command staff and I were all accessing information we were not entitled to, and therefore would be shutting down the reinstated access at 0800 hours on April 25th. He has in fact shut down that access. With regard to Sheriff Rivero's 600 allegations of inappropriate use by my agency, I submit that these are simply the sheriff's allegations, and he does not know that these are in fact violations. He has provided me with copies of allegations, and my agency is now reviewing those. My command staff and I do take these allegations very seriously, as we do with any other public concern. An independent investigation of those allegations will be conducted and necessary action taken with regard to anything inappropriate found. Had the sheriff had such a problem with this on Tuesday, perhaps he should have made me aware of his concerns on Tuesday and not after I made my safety concerns public. The appropriate and professional way for Sheriff Rivero to have handled this situation, if he had evidence that my staff was acting inappropriately, would be to contact me, report the information, and allow me to investigate and correct the problem, as other law enforcement leaders across this country would operate. Instead, he just shut down my access. Instead, he just shut down my access with no notice, discussion, or statement of just cause. This is typical of Sheriff Rivero's response to things, as he has previously shown during his interaction with law enforcement leaders throughout this county. More specifically with regard to Sheriff, Sheriff Rivero's allegations of my personal access to the RIMS records, I will cite some examples of this. On March 1st, March 26th, I personally ran a check in the sheriff's RIMS to cross-check a registered felony Megan's law sex offender currently living and registered in sheriff's jurisdiction, but reported to me committing supervised release violations by having contact with young female juveniles in downtown Lakeport. This offender has been registered in Lakeport, and the information was needed to see if there was a violation of the law. On March 29th, I personally ran checks on wanted subjects, one of which was also wanted by LCSO in preparation for putting out information to the public. On April 18th, I personally ran a check on felony suspect to cross-reference information to make a positive identification, because my office was in the process of preparing a search warrant affidavit to search for a firearm, because the subject was legally prohibited from possessing firearms, and based on, on the things he was doing. At that time, he was a clear danger to the public. I ask how Sheriff Rivero believes these are inappropriate access of the RIMS system. I submit that accessing information in these cases is very much related to officer and community safety. It is important for the board and the community to understand the Lakeport Police Dispatch contract and our prior access to sheriff's office RIMS for at least the last 10-plus years, and in prior years, access to the previous sheriff's office Alpha CAD records. Lakeport Police does have its own RIMS system, but it has not been possible to connect that to the LCSO in a way that all of our dispatch information, call logs, officer-generated records, and many other pieces of information generated from what our police department does. All of the aforementioned records, 10-plus years of them, are entered into and stored in the LCSO RIMS system due to the nature of our dispatch agreement. The sheriff has locked me out of accessing this information, which is vital to officer and community safety. By the way, I have absolutely no issue with the sheriff having or using any of the information generated by LPD that's in his system. Information needs to be shared. I believe access to this information goes hand in hand with our contract, as it has been part of our agreement for dispatch services. I believe Sheriff Rivero's actions have breached that. I believe Sheriff Rivera's actions have breached that contract and agreement. This service agreement is now not working as I need it to work in order to provide for public safety in the city of Lakeport. In addition to information needed from the system as described above, where I accessed information for public and officer safety, the Lakeport Police Department relies on these records for everyday operation of the police department to provide for public safety. Some of these records include daily activity logs and media reports, Public Records Act requests, statistics, booking records, sex register and compliance history, calls for service which include officer response time, nature of call and action taken by officer, and CAD information that needs to be submitted to the district attorney. Examples of where this information is critical to officer and public safety are, number one, where we have a suspect description and we need to go back and check records where an officer may have remembered having contact with somebody matching that description maybe two, three weeks ago, but can't remember a name, but knows the description is there. Need to go back into his activity logs to try to identify the stop and time that that was made, get the name that he ran. Now we have a possible suspect identified. We can then immediately get a picture and get the information out to the media. Number two, where an officer is conducting background investigation on a subject that we are doing a probation search, search warrant, or arrest warrant on. Additionally, other safety information that we may need to get to the public can now not be accessed or released. Additionally, the Lakeport Police Department is in the process of submitting a United States Department of Justice grant for community and school resource officer funding. In order to provide accurate information in applying for the grant, the LPD needs to access their patrol and call stats. We cannot now access that information and may be in danger of not being able to succeed in receiving this grant or others in the near future. I submit that the possible loss of hundreds of thousands of dollars in COPS grants, just because we're unable to access necessary information, is very much an officer and community safety issue. The Lakeport and Clear Lake Police Departments recently received special state COPS funding to work in collaboration with the Lake County Probation Department to conduct felony enforcement operations on probationers, parolees, and post-release community supervision subjects. I am aware that the sheriff has also shut down the Lake County Probation Department's access to interfelony probationers and PRCS subjects into RIMs or update their records. Probation was doing that as a courtesy to make that information available to police officers and deputies on the street. Without this information being entered, officers on the street will not immediately be aware of probation or PRCS status. I submit that this is very much an officer and community safety issue. Law enforcement across the United States has for many years and continues today to move towards collaboration and information sharing. Failing to share information puts the community and officers in danger and innocent citizens get hurt and killed when law enforcement does not work together. This is the best law enforcement practice and the rest of us continue to move in that direction of information sharing while Sheriff Rivera continues to go in an entirely different direction. This is yet another example of Sheriff Rivera's inability to work collaboratively with allied law enforcement agencies for the betterment of the community. And I will not stand, I will not stand by and allow Sheriff Rivera to endanger my staff or my community. Again, I stress that our access to these dispatch records contained in sheriff's RIMs is very necessary to our continued efficient operations and the safety of our officers in the community. I hereby request that the Lake County Board of Supervisors take whatever action necessary to immediately correct this situation as soon as possible as we consider this a matter of public safety for all of Lake County. Thank you.
Before you sit down, we may have a couple of questions. I know I do. Chief Rasmussen, one of the questions I have is, first of all, you're asking the Board of Supervisors to take action when in fact this is the sheriff's action to take. There may be some actions we can take, and I'll ask county counsel later to sort of outline what the board can and can't do. I know that, for example, we in the past have audited former sheriff's financial records and contracts. You know, we have the ability to do financial audits, for example. My question for you is if the sheriff and the City of Lakeport Police Department do not come to an agreement, what alternatives do you see? You know, again, we're here and part, part of this, the reason for this meeting is to discuss public safety and the public, rightly so, may be alarmed at this moment, so.
Right. And I understand that, I understand that we're not talking about contract right now, but my contract is with the Board of Supervisors, not the Lake County Sheriff for dispatch services. I'm more than willing, as I stated in here and as I told the sheriff in an email, turn my access back on to the previous levels. I will then meet with you with appropriate staff and we can set at the table and try to work this out. But that's the only way it's going to happen. I'm not going to communicate with him in emails or on the phone and try to go back and forth. That's ineffective and it's not going to work.
So you're suggesting a face-to-face meeting?
Yes, absolutely. With my appropriate staff, his appropriate staff.
If an agreement is not reached, do you have alternatives?
I, right now, I'm looking, yes, I'm looking at other options to see what I may need to do.
And it will involve, I imagine, cost and?
Potentially.
Okay.
But right now, I mean, I'm coming up on owing the county for half of my dispatch contract, but I don't feel my service is being provided right now, today.
Any questions that I had prior to this about the buzzwords, as the sheriff indicated, of public safety and officer safety have clearly been identified as more than just
I don't have any questions, but at this point, but I have a very brief statement to make. Those of us who've been around here for a long time remember 32 years ago, an officer of the Lake County Sheriff's Department was killed, Richard Hellbush. And one of the reasons he was killed is because information was not shared enough for him to know what he was coming upon. He lost his life because of that. District Attorney Don Anderson, who was a deputy sheriff at that time, was very involved in the apprehension of that, of those individuals. That was a very, very grave day in Lake County's history, and I would hope that we would have learned that the information sharing is absolutely vital to protect citizens and law enforcement officers and that communication needs to be open totally. This letter received from the City of Lakeport is signed by the mayor of the City of Lakeport, who is not just the mayor, he's a former chief of police of the City of Lakeport, spent more years than I would care to count in law enforcement. He didn't do this lightly, and that's why I would have to be here considering this. This information needs to be openly shared with all law enforcement officials so that you can do your job to protect yourselves, protect the citizens of this county.
You know, and I want to add to that, too. You know, and I appreciate the men and women that are up here, standing up here. I've, you know, worked with almost all of you at some point, and I really appreciate, you know, the work that they've done. But I got to tell you that this doesn't just go one way to where it's for their benefit. To share this information is a benefit to our deputies as well. And the discussions that I've had over the last couple of days with our deputies, I can assure you that if it weren't for the concern of retribution, you would have, again, in the sheriff's words, many, 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 many deputies up there standing with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the City of Lakeport is not the only department that's here. I'll open it for other departments to come and speak, and then we can open it to the public.
Good morning. I'm Robbie Howe, chief probation officer for Lake County. I think Chief Rasmussen covered a lot of things really well. My part in this is going to be pretty brief. I will approach a little bit of the officer and community or public safety issue that the sheriff says does not exist. For probation, what we use RIMs for is twofold. We input information into RIMs, current probation information, addresses, search clauses, whether or not someone's actually on probation, hazard information that we may have access to, and that then is available to any field officer who happens to run somebody through RIMs. Ironically, I've told the sheriff this, I think that what he shut out, us out of, is more a benefit to his people than our own. We have that information in probation. We get it from the court. We put it in RIMs so it's accessible to anybody else who needs it out there in the field. I think that's very much an officer safety issue. Again, if there's a hazard we're aware of, we want you to know about it. It's also a liability issue if someone's no longer on probation or on unsearchable probation. It's probably something a deputy in the field wants to know. The other useful RIMs we have is the in custody system. Probation is responsible for writing reports and recommendations to the courts. In custody status, time served, all of those kind of issues come from in custody, the system in custody. We have had in the past 15 users that had the access to RIMs. The sheriff's recommendation, or what he's willing to give me now, is one. One person to do everybody's RIMs access. For me, it's a big efficiency issue. If I have one person having to do the input and inquiries for 15 other people, that's probably one full position. That's all they're going to do. That in itself, efficiency is always a law enforcement safety issue and a public safety issue. For an example, if I have one probation officer, Sheriff Rivera was also in, told me that he believes it should be a peace officer with access. If I have a probation officer doing nothing but this, that's a probation officer that's not in the field, that's a probation officer that's not supervising a case load, and I believe that's certainly to be a public safety issue. We have not been denied information from the sheriff. We've just been given a process that's inconvenient and inefficient. And for what I consider to be no reason, I've asked Sheriff Rivera the one question many times, "Why? Why now? Why us?" He's never been able to tell me anything that my people or anybody in my department has done inappropriately. His answer is simply, "I have the responsibility to be accountable. I have the responsibility to audit." And I agree with that. But I have 15 users. If I have to write 15 reports one day, or my people do, that's 15 RIMs inquiries, whether one person's making it or 15 people are making one. If I have to audit that, that's the same. In fact, I think you lose accountability having one person doing it all for multiple people because then you have a little gray area in between who requested it and who actually needs it. Whereas the system as it existed, I had 15 people with users. If Sheriff Rivera or I ever found anything inappropriate, it's simple, the audit trail tells me who did it. That to date has not happened. He's made a lot of claims about having to do continuous audits from the time he took office until now. And if that's actually the case, so be it. But I haven't heard anything about any of my people doing inappropriate. If that is the case, I find it a little suspicious that in one afternoon he could find 600 violations for Lakeport. Brad's business more than mine, but had he been continuously doing these things, wouldn't something turn up if something was inappropriate? And then we have a press release that goes out that looks disfavorably upon him and all of a sudden we have 600. It's just, I don't think that's accurate. I'm fully expecting that I'll probably receive the same kind of email from him soon about my own people. And I'm more than willing, I've told him not to look into anything he tells me. It is an officer safety issue. And more than that, it's, it's, there's, we can argue all day about why he would do it, and we can speculate. I'm not going to up here. But the bottom line is even if he wanted to do this, there's a proper way to do it. Like Lakeport PD, I came to work one day just to find that it was shut off. I hadn't spoken to the sheriff. He hadn't told me he had a concern. He hadn't worked it out. He could have come to me at any time and said, "You know, I have a problem with this many users. What can we do?" And we would have done it. I'd be happy to audit my own people. That's just not how it went. I, we came to work one day and it was gone with a message of, "If you got a problem with it, contact the sheriff personally." That's just not the way to do business, to cooperate with law enforcement in our county, and it's not efficient. I'll take any questions if you have them with me.
Not yet.
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Good morning. This is Don Anderson, the district attorney. You know, two years ago, we had a wonderful tool in law enforcement, extremely wonderful. That was cooperation between agencies. Unfortunately, we don't have that now. And I can see, I can really sympathize with Robbie Howe and Brad Rasmussen, what they're going through now because back in April of 2011, the same thing happened to our office. Our access to RIMs was arbitrarily shut off unilaterally with no warning, no comment, no discussion between Sheriff Rivera and my office. Well, as told later, we had almost 5,000 different entries which Sheriff Rivera was as was inappropriate or illegal. And what that was, was our investigators were, kind of like Robbie's officers do, were updating information on suspects, witnesses, and the public. Were getting addresses that they don't have that we would input. It was a benefit to the sheriff's office even more so than us. We would, our investigators would access the RIM system and be able to read reports from the sheriff's office. Quite often, there will be investigations going on, the sheriff's office is doing, at the same time we're doing an investigation on the same person. There was that cooperation, we were able to do this. Now, well, back then, back in April, there were problems between the sheriff and I. There were three major problems going on back in April. One was the issue of subpoenas, where he would not, he refused to serve subpoenas like they've been doing for, since the time, since almost forever. I wouldn't prosecute one individual that he wanted prosecuted. And there's another issue, which somewhat dealt with the RIM system. I would not allow electronic filing from his office to our office with just a two-week notice. It was a demand he made. He says, "In two weeks, when we're out submitting reports, we're going to do it electronically." I says, "No, we're going to have to go over this a little bit more and work the system of doing this whole work." So he was angry with me. In that month, he shot us off of RIMs totally. So then in October, we finally came to an agreement with subpoenas. And I agreed to this meeting on one condition, is that he, in this MOU, he said he would turn us back onto the RIM system to give us reader access. That way, our investigators can look at some of the reports, we can look up people, the information that we needed. That would have been great. I signed that MOU back in October of 2011, and as of this day, he still reneges on that agreement. He will not turn us back on the RIMs. What this has done, not only has it affected our ability to do our job, because we can't look at the reports, we don't know what they're doing unless we have a one-on-one conversations with their investigators or their deputies, or unless we get a police report or go through a long process of asking for information. And also what it's done is our investigators, when we're out in the street, we cannot now call into the RIM system and find out information, do research of the people we're going to investigate. A lot of times, we're going to investigate suspects and crimes and we have very little information. We can run teletype information to the state, but we can't see what's in their computer system, the sheriff's office computer system. So we don't know what these people, we're going to go contact and do law enforcement action on. We don't know what they're like. So yes, he is putting my investigators in jeopardy. God help him if anybody ever hurt one of my investigators because they don't have access to the information that they should have. I really like your comment regarding to Richard Hellbush, because that's the problem we got now. Had Richard Hellbush had that information, he probably would be alive still here today. And regards to Mr. Rivera's comment about prosecuting cases like you, Rob Brown, he's never submitted anything to us. Not one single reporter's come over to our office for prosecution for illegal use of the RIM system or any other type of system. And just last, I want to draw the board's attention to something that occurred just less than a month ago down in Clear Lake Police Department. One of Sheriff Rivera's investigators was looking for someone, he can't find them. He goes to the Clear Lake Police Department, enters their RIM system. He finds them and arrests, he arrested that individual and got that child molester off the street only because Clear Lake Police Department was cooperating with his agency and allowed them into the RIM system. Now that can't be done, vice versa. Any questions?
No, I just have a comment and recollection of that because I remember back when Frank, initially, he and Kelly Cox and I were meeting in Kelly's office, and he made this allegation that investigating- that investigators in your office were using the system, and he did say illegally. And I said, well, you need to talk to, you need to talk to DA about that. You share that with him. And he said he hadn't had a chance to get a hold of you yet. And I said, well, I'll get a chance. And I got up right then. I walked to your office, and I said, grab your coat, let's go down and talk to Kelly. By the time we got down here, Frank was gone, and we shared with you the information, and you said, well, I'm going to take care of it right now. And you went and looked at it and found out that it wasn't illegal access, it was just what you described. So the nonsense story that goes on on the radio and everything else about, you know, how, you know, he's done all these things to fight, another buzzword, corruption, into his third year, still no one's been arrested, is just nonsense.
That's very true. I do recall that. And say, not only has he never sent over any single report about misuse of RIM system, he has never sent over any single report about corruption in any county government here. I haven't seen anything, and I talked to the Department of Justice, they haven't seen anything. So, see, that is the way it is.
Any other departments here? Okay, Chief Clausen, come on up.
Distinguished members, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. It's with heavy heart. It's a sad day in law enforcement that we're here. Sorry about that. Is that better? We have reader access currently to the Lake County Sheriff's Department, and I appreciate it that we still have it. A little piece of trivia that hasn't came out yet is many of my predecessors that I grew up in the business and in life with are here. Back when RIMs was originally purchased for the sheriff's department, it was with the intention that all agencies in the county have RIMs. With, one of the big selling points of that is that we all share that information, and we can all use each other's systems and get that information from it. And it was quite a cost to do that. I believe it was '05 or '06 that the Clear Lake Police Department switched over to RIMs, well over a quarter of a million dollars. And that was the purpose, and we were working towards that. There was a member of the sheriff's department under a different regime that was writing a program. So information can be limited for ongoing investigations, that you'd only be able to review a case that was fully completed or what have you to that aspect. That staff member's no longer here, but that was the agreement, it was a gentleman's agreement at Mini Cheese meetings that we were at, to make this happen with the ultimate goal of going paperless in the county. And that's a huge benefit for my department, so I don't have to drive fifty miles to get a report up to the DA's office, or if they need another photograph or something to that effect. Currently with what's happened, Brad and I were lucky enough to get some funding to do some special enforcement on the PCRS. It absolutely hinders us. For my department, it is not as grave because we have our own dispatch center and I have all that information that's immediately put into the reports automatically, but not on Brad because he's in a unique position. It's probably more troublesome with probation. That's how we get probation information. Unfortunately, probation is basically banker's hours. It's Monday through Friday, eight to five. Persons that we contact, that we need that information on, are a lot of times after-hours, weekends, and holidays, and we have no way of accessing current information. We have that reader-only access to RIMs to the sheriff's department, which is fantastic, but it's only as good as the information going into it. So if Rob's staff cannot put in the current information, we can't rely upon that. The not knowing somebody's on a supervised release can be catastrophic. It can also be catastrophic if we believe they still are and they're not, because now we can no longer rely upon that. That means my dispatcher has to, the man in the field, or woman in the field, the person in the field, has to remain with that person, call into dispatch, our dispatch then has to call into probation, hopefully somebody's there to answer that call, and physically check if that person's on probation and what the terms and conditions are of that probation. It's absolutely hamstringing us. We're going back thirty years in our technology. So whatever can be done to help would be greatly appreciated. Do you have any questions?
Plenty, but not just yet.
Okay.
Thank you. There's other public.
So, how many members of the public are going to want to speak today? Okay. So, why don't we, Sheriff, can you wait for the public? You want to wait for the public to say their piece?
I have a very brief response with a few comments that were made during the record.
Come on up then.
First started with Chief Rasmussen's response. Chief Rasmussen, in his response, takes for granted that he had unfettered access to RIMs, when he's admitted over and over and over again that his access, according to him, was limited to CAD. To come back now and say, well, we need RIMs for another reason, well, why didn't he bring that to my attention? If he wanted to access RIMs, and he himself has admitted to accessing RIMs for other than CAD purposes, why didn't, why did he not come to me and say, you know what, we need to expand our RIMs capability here, we need permission to go into your RIM system and do other things? He never did that, and in fact, he told me that they were not accessing RIMs for any other reason than for CAD, Computer Assisted Dispatch histories, nothing else.
Sheriff, before you go on, now that you know that he has those other examples, are you willing to sit down with him and work this out?
Well, I have, I'm holding here what Chief Clausen was just referring to, which is the interoperability agreement between the different departments. This is in fact the agreement, it's the appropriate agreement for sharing information between departments, which I've never touched, never modified, never done anything to. They still have that ability. If they want more ability, like to be able to modify my records or go in with unfettered access to the sheriff's RIMs access, I cannot allow that because I can't control it. And I'll get to a couple of examples in just a moment. It won't take me much longer, maybe a few minutes.
Okay. Well, I'm hoping you'll answer my question before you go on, but if, are you willing to sit down with the chief?
I'm willing to sit down with anyone, but I cannot compromise the security of the information that we hold about the public. I will not do that, but I'll sit down and talk to him. Here's the interoperability contract. It provides, the contract itself provides for the information that was negotiated between these different agencies and many other different agencies for how much information agencies are to share. So to say that this is going back thirty years is absolutely disingenuous and sophisticated. It's not true. Here's the contract, they have access, they've never been denied access either, it's Clear Lake PD, so you're welcome to look at it. I can provide a copy for you if you want. Chief Rasmussen talks about investigating the information that I left him. Well, you know, I called him up and I said, hey, I left you a package with all these accesses that had occurred into our RIM system since you had told me that none of your officers had done so. Not until I wrote him an email saying, all right, first of all, he wrote me an email saying he's not going to talk to me at all. That was his position. He doesn't want to talk to me unilaterally, he won't talk to me even though we'd been talking all day. He writes me an email, says, I'm not going to talk to you at all unless you give me RIMs access, complete RIMs access. In other words, user password, RIMs access into the sheriff's office. And I wrote back to him, I said, listen, because of our discussion yesterday and today, I am, I did an audit and I found all these problems, you need to go to my office, I left an envelope for you, that information is there for you to review. And he in fact had reviewed it, and now he's saying, you know, if there's something wrong, he's going to open an investigation. But the bottom line is that he is presenting a situation here that didn't occur. He had access to CAD, and he was allowed access to CAD through a system that I didn't approve. When I found a different way to give him access to CAD, which he does, and he claims he doesn't have, but I have different information from my dispatch, he still wants access to RIMs. That's a completely different request. And it's a request that is a very serious request. That means he has a password and a user login, which means that the auditing and the responsibility for the misuse of that information rests on me, not him. That rests on me. And I can't even investigate the officers. If I have some question about it, I can't investigate it because I have no authority over his department. That's a really difficult position to be put in, supervisor Rushings. Concerning Chief Probation, or the Chief of Probation, Rob Howe, as you know, he used to work for me as a captain. He's well familiar with RIMs. He had access to RIMs, and I know he knows RIMs very well, frankly, and so does his Assistant Chief Probation Officer, Brian Martin. I've offered him access, and I think it's reasonable access. He doesn't think it's reasonable, but he hasn't, and he stated it, to his credit, he's told the truth about that. I've offered him access, and he said, no, I need fifteen, I don't, one isn't going to do it. All right, well, there's maybe room for negotiation there. I would agree with that. But why haven't, why hasn't he taken the one? And then I sent him a letter just yesterday, or an email just yesterday, saying, you know what, if you're not going to take this access, I will have my dispatcher's input probation information. I'll do it. I'll take care of it. Haven't heard anything. So they're presenting problems and blaming it on me, and then saying that the only resolution is for them to have unfettered access to public information, any one of these persons in the audience could have their records accessed, and I'm responsible for that control. And I take that responsibility very, very seriously. Interestingly, and I have begun an audit of probation, just like, you know, I trusted Brad Rasmussen's word when he said he wasn't, him and his officers weren't accessing RIMs beyond CAD. I did trust his word. So I went on to look to other problems. This is a huge task, and I have to prioritize. But as soon as I started talking to him, and with this unexplainable desire to have complete unfettered access to RIMs, it triggered my curiosity. That's where I began that investigation. I've done the same thing here now with probation. He has fifteen users. Four of them have no record at all of being in RIMs. They're active users, they're probation officers, but they haven't touched RIMs. So to make this argument, oh, every one of them, every moment needs this, and I can't have one, I have to have fifteen, and four of them are completely inactive from January first to April twenty-fourth, is absurd. If you have four of them inactive, why can't you reduce those numbers? I say one. If he wants to come back, he's never come back and said, hey, let's do two or three or anything. He's just refused to do anything, and that's not appropriate. You can't sit back on your hands and make demands that are unreasonable from a person who's trying to do the right thing, and then say, oh, well, he's unreasonable because he won't accept my unilateral demands. Also included within the users in the probation department is an individual who made phone calls into the probation department, who worked there, threatening physical bodily harm to another probation officer. Now, I don't know that that's an Internal Affairs investigation, it has to do with Mr. Howe, and I don't know anything about it. I have nothing to do with it, I have no control over it, but I can tell you this, we were never notified by anyone to shut off his RIMs access. As of yesterday, still had RIMs access. So there's no communication coming in my direction either. They're all saying, well, Rivera isn't talking to me, Rivera isn't talking to me. Well, how about that? Should I not know? When you have a problem with an employee, don't you take the keys away, take their badge away, take the gun away, but you're going to leave them criminal history information access? Really? And how am I supposed to find out about that? That's not my department, that's his department, that's his responsibility. The last thing I'll have to say is that he's saying he's going to audit this thing, and he'd be happy to audit his home people's access. Well, you know, something else I found very curious when I was, when I last looked at this and started looking at the probation department, neither he nor Brian Martin actually have an official passcode and login to go into RIMs. So how are you going to conduct that audit if you don't have the passcode and a login? It befuddles me, and I'm completely mystified as to how it's possible that the Chief Probation Officer and the Deputy Chief Probation Officer, neither one of them have a passcode to the sheriff's office RIMs or a login to the sheriff's office RIMs, and they claim that I'm prohibiting them from doing their job by limiting the amount of access that they have.
Sheriff Rivera, before you go on, is it possible to, I keep wondering if it isn't possible for you to come up with a protocol that has to be followed to ensure auditability and to ensure audit trail? And is there a protocol that you can come up with that will then allow you to give access to these various departments, provided that they agree to follow that protocol?
Well, there are different, there are, there are different levels of security.
Right, but can you come up with that? I mean, is there a way, is there a way to bridge this gap? You know, they're asking for unfettered access. If they get that, it seems to me there would be a set of rules and requirements that would come with it.
Yeah, but you're asking me to turn, not only to turn over my obligation, but to turn over my responsibility and trust that my obligation and my responsibility will be properly handled by a third party.
Well, I am asking, what I am asking is, is it possible to have a protocol that would give you some assurance?
I don't have the answer to that question for you. I'm sure anything is possible through the computer system. I mean, you can always upgrade or sophisticate or add to the computer system, but to my knowledge, the only way would be to give them system administrator access, which is even, that's the highest level of access, right below my own access, which is unlimited access. But that's, that system administrator is not something that I am prepared to give to anyone, because that allows for a lot of changes that I cannot, do not have the time to monitor.
Are you willing to sit at the table with any given department and work out what that protocol might be in order to allow the level of access they require to do their work?
I'll listen to any proposals that anyone makes to me, but I've made counter proposals to both Chief Rasmussen and to Chief Howe, and up till now, the stall has been on that side, not mine.
The reason I'm asking is that may be a role that, you know, I keep looking for the role the Board of Supervisors should play in this. We don't have the ability to tell you what to do or how to do your job.
I understand.
But what we can do potentially is provide a forum under which these discussions can take place.
I understand.
It's obvious that there's a huge amount of disagreement, and it would be, I think it would be for the best interests of all the citizens of Lake County to have these departments working together and agreeing.
Okay. Well, let me bring up something that we agree at least initially on.
One quick question here.
Yes, sir.
I had one quick question. You just mentioned that there were, excuse me, the ability to have different levels of access in RIMs.
Yes, sir.
Isn't that exactly what Supervisor Rushing was talking about?
Well, not necessarily.
Okay.
It's a little more complicated than that. I can go into it if you want.
No, no. You said you'd be brief, and that's not.
Okay.
But let me finish the question. That's okay. The question was, are there, and maybe you're not aware of that, but you said that there are, there's an ability to have levels of access to RIMs. Is that, or is that not the case?
Yes, that is the case.
So that could be worked out.
Yes.
Thank you.
Turning to the DA's comments, yes, in fact, I did have an enormous problem with the amount of access and what the DA's investigators were doing. I still continue to have heartburn over it, and it was a subject of an independent investigation which sided with me, and that could be found on the sheriff's website. It's been rehashed over and over and over again. Was anything done? No. The DA said he was going to have an Internal Affairs investigation, take appropriate disciplinary action. I never heard anything back. We did have a meeting, and Anita Grant graciously granted, you know, her time along with Kelly Cox at the time, along with Craig Woodwards, along with myself and other people, and the sheriff's office, and it was agreed that the DA would in fact be allowed limited access. And the DA, the Chief DA investigator was to contact our office and give us the names, and we would set that up. Now, just yesterday, in advance of this type of comment being made, I checked with the individuals that would, me, one of them, but there are a couple others. That never happened. So to say, well, he didn't just summarily grant us access with, when the, at the end of the meeting was like, hey, the DA investigator's going to meet with us, we'll get new passcodes, we'll get the amount of limited access, and Anita's nodding her head because she remembers this meeting, and then to not show up, and then accuse me of not providing the access, well, that's really tough to address, but I must address it. And then the Clear Lake Police access, Chief Rasmussen, I'm positive, never gave my officer a password and a login to the Clear Lake Police system. What he did was exactly what I said I would do. When someone comes in and says, I have a legitimate need to know this information, and they have a right because they're a peace officer, he gave them the information, and I thank him for his cooperation. Did he give them a passcode to RIMs? Did he give the officer a login to? Did he give the officer a login to RIMS? No, I don't think so. What he gave him was the information, and you have to, see, it's easy to mix this stuff up, because it is, you know, if you're not familiar with the systems and all the intricacies, it's easy to make comments that can be misunderstood. But the bottom line is, to be able to walk into a police station or sheriff's station, if one of Chief Rasmussen's officers walks in and says, "Hey, I got somebody in the county who's a 290 registrant, and I need to pick him up," you bet that we'll be right on it, helping him, and going into RIMS and giving him the information that he needs. Are we going to go to the system administrator and give that individual, for that one case, access and a password and a login? Absolutely not. That would be absurd. So here, here's the deal. There's been much ado made about information and access, and et cetera, et cetera. But everybody, I have yet to hear any one of these individuals talk about this interoperability contract. This is what it's all about. This is how it's supposed to be. Each agency has their own records, and then the chief or the sheriff keeps those records, and he's ultimately responsible. If something goes sideways, who are you going to call up on the carpet at that point? It's going to be me. But even a larger issue than that is just the public's privacy. They have a right to know that these records are secure, and that people, like, for instance, this individual who is, my understanding, and I don't know what the outcome of the Internal Affairs investigation is concerning that probation officer. All I know is that he was left on our records because we were never notified. We can't have that type of happenstance and negligence, for lack of another word. This has to be secure. This is a law enforcement agency, and when you talk about moving into the 21st century, that's what this is about. Moving into the 21st century is not the days when you call up Joe, and you ask Joe something about some enemy of yours down the street, or you happen to see a license plate with an attractive young lady, and you run her plate. That is not acceptable conduct. And that is what tightening these records is all about. Moving into the 21st century, I'm all for sharing information, as long as it's legitimate and necessary and comports with state law. And with that, I'll let the public speak. Thank you very kindly.
All right. It's 11:30. We've been at this for an hour and a half. I'd like to take a 10-minute recess, and then we'll be back here to take public.
Madam Chair, I have to leave at 1:00, and absolutely no later.
All right, so let's take 10 minutes. So I'd like to open this up to the public, but I'd like to remind everyone that we are talking about the information on access to law enforcement information systems and discussion and consideration of options by our board. I would urge people, if you have facts, to stick to them and try to avoid drama. And I would encourage anyone with ideas as to how to resolve issues like this of impasse between departments, to be sure and bring your ideas forward to this board. So there was a request to go first, right here, because she has to leave. Come on up.
Thank you, thank you very much for holding this meeting today.
Is that my phone?
Tap on it.
It's on.
It's on now. My name is Barbara Galvin, and I'm the mother of a firefighter. He's with Cal Fire, and he volunteers in South Lake. Another very important reason for open communication among all law enforcement is so that our first responders have all the information that they need before they go into a home that has a medical emergency or anyplace else. They're ordered to stage, and when they're in the staging pattern, they're waiting for law enforcement to provide information or backup. So I just really would like to know that all the most recent current information is shared among all agencies for their protection and the protection of the entire county. And also, just as a suggestion, because I know we have a grown-up problem, we need a grown-up solution. And I think that when various departments get together, and hopefully the sheriff's going to be willing to discuss it, find a solution that works for everyone, I would encourage you to invite members of the public to sit in and listen, so that it is a joint effort. And having the access is extremely important. Privacy of the citizens is also important. That's, thank you.
Okay, so those who want to speak, just form a line. There's already a line there, but there are plenty of chairs if you gentlemen would like to sit down.
Good morning. Officer Gary Basor with the Lakeport Police Department, on behalf of the Lakeport Police Officers Association. I'd like to thank the Lake County Board of Supervisors for your prompt consideration regarding this matter. I'd also like to make a quick clarification. I think that Sheriff Rivera missed a point in regards to Chief Clausen's statement. The fact that an officer from, or a deputy from the Lake County Sheriff's Department went to Clear Lake Police Department, I don't think it's an issue of login. It's an issue of sharing that information. That's what's most important, to keep the citizens and the officers and deputies safe on the street. The members of the Lakeport Police Officers Association wish to express their full support for Chief Rasmussen and his administration in their efforts to regain access to this vital record system. The Lakeport Police Department and its individual officers have a mutually beneficial relationship with the Lake County Sheriff's Office and the Lake County Central Dispatch in sharing vital officer safety information. We believe that Sheriff Rivera's unwarranted removal of our access to this important resource is detrimental to that relationship. In addition to the uses mentioned by Chief Rasmussen, Lakeport Police Department officers rely on the Sheriff's RIMS system to locate records on subjects who may not be in the Lakeport Police Department's system, to update our own records, to generate photo lineups, to prepare and brief other officers for warrant service, and for many other legitimate law enforcement uses. We're also concerned about the Lake County probation department's loss of access to the Sheriff's RIMS system, and I understand they have some limited access. The probation staff are not able to enter that probation terms or post-release community supervision update information on offenders living in and/or frequenting the city of Lakeport, thereby jeopardizing public safety and officer safety. Sheriff Rivera's removal of our access to the system will result in our officers being less informed about subjects we come in contact with. We consider this a major public safety and officer safety issue, and add our voices to Chief Rasmussen's and the City of Lakeport's administration's request for complete reinstatement of our access. Thank you.
This, I assume this line is the group that everybody in line wants to speak? Is that right? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, good morning. My name is Terry Larson, and I'm editor of Lake County Magazine. We're an online magazine here in Lake County. In a way, I'm here to take responsibility for this action. It was my team and myself that released some information about RIMS for some things that happened back in 2011 that may have triggered other audits that now led to this point. I do want to say I'm not defending the sheriff in any way for the way that he's done this, and what I'm trying to do is just bring some facts into the situation. There's a lot of misinformation regarding RIMS. What RIMS is, I've been studying it for the last month while investigating this story. I've been to federal authorities, I've been to authorities in Mendocino County and state authorities, and I have verified all the information that I'll be presenting here. And I'll try to make it quick. The full document is available on our website, lakecomagazine.com, and I will try to just kind of briefly edit this so that I don't take up all this time, but it's very important to know the background of why we're sitting in this situation. This is not the beginning of something. This actually should be the end of something, something that took place and started back in 2011. And according to all the sources that I've talked to, from the FBI to Mendocino County Sheriff's Department, to CHP at the state level, because the CHP here locally would not speak to me about the issue, although I see that they have shown up here in the room, everyone says that unfettered access to any RIMS database is absolutely not appropriate by other agencies. The access that they're given is to a certain security level. Those levels are based on the agency and what the agency needs to know. The fact that records were changed by other agencies, such as the DA's office and possibly the Lakeport Police Department, that is felony charges, okay? No one is allowed to change anybody else's database, and I'm sure that those other agencies would object if someone went into their databases and changed those records. I'm speaking as a citizen now, and the fact that for the last, well, my records go back all the way to 2009, but I know it goes even longer than that, agencies, law enforcement agencies in this county have had basically unfettered access to our citizens' records. I've had citizens, multiple citizens, come up to me and specifically give detailed information on how they know these RIMS were accessed by certain things that came out in public, and other public officials have been named in these accusations. And that information is also going to be forwarded to the proper authorities to be dealt with. There will be an investigation. My recommendation is that we have an independent audit by someone outside the county, maybe even, you know, a federal agency, DOJ, and that these wrongdoings are investigated, and that the protocols are also improved within the different law enforcement departments, because there's no question that law enforcement needs to communicate with each other. We have to have that happening. And I can just see that, you know, this is going to open a lot of doors of communication amongst these different agencies, and could very well end up to be in the best interest of the county. So shortly after the sheriff received a vote of no confidence, I was sent a document that I had looked at on the sheriff's website at least once or twice, and finding the information contained within to possibly be damaging to the local district attorney, the sheriff, and other law enforcement agencies, I then realized that there had been no follow-up on this report. Now, this report was produced by California Judicial Investigations, a private investigative team out of the Bay Area. I attempted to find out from them who hired them, and they referred me back to the sheriff and Anita Grant. The sheriff told me that, as there was a lot of controversy surrounding four incidents that had taken place during his watch in the first quarter of 2011, he went to Anita and told her something along the lines of, "Let's get this out in the open once and for all, and settle it. I'll hire a third-party investigator, and my department will pay for it." Over $15,000 was paid for this report that very few people got to see. When I called and spoke with Anita about it, she was very evasive, and she told me that Frank was responsible for the hiring of the investigators. Frank said that he did not hire the team, but asked her to do it and settle the questions regarding his conduct on these incidents. He did cooperate with the investigators fully, although the DA's office and Clear Lake PD also did not cooperate with them. Not getting any satisfaction from either side, I went directly to the investigators and asked them if they could tell me who hired them. Joseph Soldis told me, "Sure thing. Let me just call Anita and Frank, and we'll get back to me as soon as possible."
This is about RIMS, right?
Yes, it is directly about RIMS. Anita was the only person they reported back to on this report, and the only person who saw an unredacted version of it. Frank was never called by the investigators. I got a call back from them that night saying that they're not allowed to tell me who hired them, because it would be a violation of client privacy. So Frank never got a call from them that day, so I have to assume it came from this grant. So $15,000 of our hard-earned money paid for the report, and nothing was taken on any action at the time. The second section of this four-section report is called "Access to RIMS by Unauthorized Personnel," and of course, it piqued my interest. My first call was to the sheriff to explain how this report had never been addressed. He basically said that the DA had told the investigators at the time, which was also in the report, that he was conducting his own internal investigation, and that he would handle it. But there has been a result produced from that investigation, and those same four DA investigators that also were working for the Sheriff's Department are still working for the DA's office. Now, how they accessed the RIMS was they had a higher level of security by working as Sheriff's Department dispatchers. So they were using that access level to access information and taking it back to the DA's office. That in itself is misdemeanor crime, as long as no records are changed. But you actually heard our DA say that records were changed, and we don't know who did it and why they did it, but just the fact that records were changed, that is a felony offense according to federal law, okay, and the Corey rules, which is criminal offender record information. So the penal code states that it's need-to-know, right-to-know, as the sheriff did say, and in compliance with the Corey regulations, Lake County Sheriff's Department maintained and managed Corey records, and that did include CAD, incident reports, crime reports. All the basic documentation, any interaction with law enforcement any citizen would have, are contained in RIMS. So it's specific to Lake County Sheriff's Office. That's what everyone needs to know. This is not the CAD database. This is not any other database except specifically to Lake County Sheriff's Office. So they have the right to determine who gets that information and at what levels of access that they be granted. So there are penal codes, and the sheriff was correct. It was California Penal Code 1175 through 1181. And in my investigation, I have found that there has been a long history of abuse. This goes back to the Mitchell Hopkins era. And we, Mr. Brown brought a gentleman that was prosecuted for doing that in 2009. But again, I've also met other people who have not come forward because of fear, because they're dealing with law enforcement here, and they're afraid to come forward, but they come to me privately, and they're willing to testify that they feel that their records have been accessed. Okay, so there was, I also, in my research, found copies of a contract between the Robinson Rancheria Tribal Council. It's a cooperative agreement between the Robinson Rancheria Police Department, a quote-unquote federally deputized police agency of the United States Department Interior, and the Lake County District Attorney in Lake County. This interagency agreement was entered to on the 12th day of August in 2010, and established a prosecutorial relationship with District Attorney Don Anderson and the tribal police. At that time, the top cop on the reservation was a federally commissioned BIA officer. Today, that officer is John Irwin. He's a former Lake County cop who no longer holds a federal commission. What that means is that the contract between the tribal police should be null and void, yet the DA is still supporting illegal evictions by an illegal government with officers who impersonate federal officers.
We're kind of heading away from RIMS now.
It's going right back, right now.
Okay, circle it back.
Okay, I got to set up the background.
Circle it back, please.
So why is this important to the issue? Because on May 5th, 2011, the DA's office received $279,000 from the Indian Gaming Special Distribution Fund, money that in previous years had been less than half this amount. An article in The Record Beast by Jeremy Walsh said that local agencies, including the county's district attorney's office and the sheriff's office, local fire districts, and other organizations were allowed to apply for this money. Members of the Indian Gaming Local Community Benefit Committee gathered to vote on which applications were approved and determine the funding distribution. Supervisors Rob Brown and Jeff Smith, and Robinson delegate Buffy Jimenez were the only voting members present at the meeting. As a result, all three committee members had to vote in favor of an application for it to be approved. While Brown and Smith voted to approve the funds that Big Valley wanted to give to the Sheriff's Office, but Jimenez voted against it, so no funds were distributed to the Sheriff's Office that year. And Rivera said at that time, earlier in that year, he had received a letter from Robinson Tribal Police, offering that the tribe would support distributing mitigation funds to the Sheriff's Office in exchange for cross-deputizing the tribal officers. In addition to cross-training, the DA's office and Robinson were also demanding that the tribal cops be allowed access to RIMS. This was not something I could support, because it would put all of the liability for their actions of the county of Lake on the Sheriff's Office, said Rivera. Okay, so I did some research myself, and I spoke to Randy Johnson up at Mendocino County. He's in charge of the RIMS up there. He's a captain. He told me that there is absolutely no precedent for any tribal law enforcement agency to be allowed any access to RIMS, period. That is totally not allowed, okay? So they also said that the reason that they didn't give the sheriff any money that year was because he had denied them the access to RIMS as well as cross-training. So that, to me, is a big red flag, okay? Here you have DA's office receiving a huge amount of money, and he's going forward with prosecuting of illegal evictions and things on Robinson, which is not related to RIMS, but he was also advocating for these tribal police to have access. In my investigation, I found out that John Irwin, according to the Bureau of Investigations, is not a federally commissioned officer. There are no federally commissioned officers on Robinson. Therefore, they have no authority to access any information regarding any citizens of Lake County, period. So the fact that they're asking for that access is totally, totally out of line, okay? So you have a DA who's received a large sum of money from the tribe, and they want access to RIMS, and the sheriff finds out that he's got dispatchers that are sharing information with the DA's office. So he cuts off their access in 2011. So now we fast-forward to now. Well, right after that was the investigation that began into the sheriff's Brady Letter. This Brady Letter was created by Mr. Anderson. He also delisted several people that were on the Brady List from Mr. Hopkins, and created his own guidelines for doing the Brady. So now they exposed the sheriff as a liar, they bring him forward to So now they did, they expose the sheriff as a liar, they bring him forward to you to give a vote of no confidence, and of course the recall has begun and you know the rest. So once I saw there was some kind of connection, uh, with the DA supporting him and Robinson and being denied access, I began talking to other law enforcement agencies. I started at the federal level and I worked my way down. In every case, they said that there's no one from any outside agency ever has permission to change, alter, or even print any record without their knowledge and permission, period. Okay, these are the rules. These are the, the state and federal guidelines. So that's why I'm saying there's a lot of misinformation here regarding what RIMS is and who's really allowed to access. That's it. The sheriff has an agreement with the state as one of 58 county sheriffs that he will protect that information of our citizens, and he is doing just that. If he found something that is not appropriate, I'm not agreeing with his methods of handling things, but I think that he is right on in denying contact until there's a system in place that will not allow inappropriate action. And sir, inappropriate action means accessing any RIMS database without the sheriff's permission. That is inappropriate action. Okay, so yesterday, we tried to call Anita again to talk to her about the contract with the LPD, because in the contract, as the sheriff stated, it says nothing about RIMS in that contract. So when he asked the question, she said, "That's a very complicated question, but I understand what you're saying." She asked him to hold on and she walked away from the phone and never came back, okay? So I, I see too many red flags here to think that this is just an issue of public safety. Um, there is no public safety, uh, situation because anyone that needs these records can get them. Whether they can get them fast enough, that's maybe up for discussion, but he is not denying full access to anything. He is denying access to inappropriate access to parts of the RIMS that really are not to be accessed by any other law enforcement agency without his permission. And I've got all the documentation to back that up and I'll be happy to talk to anyone privately about it.
Thank you.
Very well said.
Well, um, county council, it's kind of uncharacteristic behavior for you to walk away from a telephone call, is it?
Actually, I wasn't on the phone. Kathy O'Connell in my office was on the phone. She stopped me. I was in the middle of a meeting with North Shore Fire Protection District.
Fair enough, okay. All right, thanks. Um, come on up.
Hey, guys. Um, I'm glad you brought up the Constitution when you first opened the meeting.
Just say your name, please.
Bruce Forsyth. Everybody tells me they know me, but I guess they don't. Rob, you know what the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution is? I'm sorry, what? Do you know what the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution is?
Go ahead.
You don't know. Denise?
The right to unreasonable search and seizure.
No, close.
It's illegal search and seizure.
Privacy. You raised your hand. You know the Constitution, but you don't, do you? Now, listen, this is about, this is about-
Honest to God, Bruce, do you want a constitutional quiz here?
This is about public privacy. And it is a safety issue when RIMS is accessed illegally. If my file, if these people's files, if the public's files are illegally accessed, it is a safety issue. It's significant. You don't want yours accessed. Nobody here wants somebody not authorized to access those RIMS files, and that's what happened. We know that's happened. We know it happened at least 5,000 times, minimal, by the judicial reporter. Anita got the report. She knows it. He knows it. You know it. I am urging you to take the bull by the horns on this. You need to open up an audit. You need to bring in an outside agency. You should have done it a year ago. Nixon would have made it through his presidency if he admitted to Watergate in the beginning. You're doing the citizens, Anita, a disjustice. You, you know that these accesses illegally happen. You know the dispatchers or the investigators or the DA use dispatcher credentials to access. You know, everyone knows this.
Bruce, not everyone knows this. This is actually, this is the first hearing we've ever-
Everyone who should knows it, knows it. Read the report, Denise, you'll see it.
This is the first hearing we've had on this item, so-
But you've had a 59-page report in front of you for over a year.
Actually, no, I haven't.
Well, Anita, give it to them.
He's been on the sheriff's website for two years.
Okay, so I have to go to the-
Okay, go to the, read it.
So I can go to the sheriff's office.
I'm surprised you have it because that, that report is 99% what it's all about. Please read it. You don't have to read the 59 pages. It deals with other issues, but there's a section on RIMS.
Fair enough, but just make the assumption that we're trying to do the right thing here, okay?
And, and I'm hoping so, but Anita knows all about this in half. She got the report mailed to her, okay? She knows. Open up an independent investigation and audit every single access from now back to how far you have to. The judicial group stopped counting at 5,000 and they said it could be as many as 10,000 illegal citizen access, accesses. You've got to take action on it. You can't push it under the rug, Anita. You've got to take significant action that tells the citizens their privacy is protected. Yes, I saw the report and you know what? We're taking action on it. It's critical. My file was accessed illegally and Rob Brown was a party to it. I can prove it, he'll say no, but his record of lying doesn't lack credibility. I'm not going to go into how I know, I know. And you carried around a picture of me that you-
It's on the sheriff's website.
Uh, Rob, Rob, don't interrupt me. Don't interrupt me. When you found, hey, ah, Rob, 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 you're in-
Okay, hang on, let, you know what, let's, let's go ahead and let, let's go-
I didn't want to go down this road because it's gonna take too long. I want to finish talking, Rob, you're not gonna interrupt me. Denise, can I have my floor?
Hold on a second. Supervisor Brown?
Rob, I have a witness that knows what you did. We'll get into that later. Rob, we'll get into it later.
Okay, hang on, everyone. Bruce, I'm gonna give you the floor in a second.
Thank you.
Let me just say something. I don't want this to happen again. Let him finish speaking, then go after him.
Then I'll state what a moron he is.
Go after me some other time. My file was accessed illegally. I know it for a fact. And when that audit gets done, it will be shown, but do the audit. Don't, you don't have to bring in the judicial group because everybody feels that they were hired by Frank or not or any, get a separate one, but you must audit the files. You cannot let this just lie here. It was illegal, period. There's absolutely no question. It was illegal, period. Take the bull by, take it by the horn and get an independent agency in. If you don't do it yourself, someone else is coming in. It'll happen, it has to. Okay, that's a significant point, almost done. Thank you, Sheriff Rivera. You are the first elected official who I have seen stand up for the rights and the privacy of citizens. God bless you for doing so. I fear what would happen if there had been someone, for example, from the old Mitchell regime who is sheriff now. This would not see the lie today. I thank you. You're a stand-up guy and it's important, very important. Concerns for public safety shall never supersede the Constitution, period. Get an audit done. Tell the citizens of this county that you've done it and the records are to be shown. That's my biggest request, and if you don't, this thing snowballs big time and you all know it. Thank you.
Fair enough, thank you. And I do want to say the Fourth Amendment is the right to unreasonable search and seizure. And by the way, the Constitution doesn't mention privacy specifically, but it implies it in the Fourth Amendment.
Thank you. I'm gonna respond because I can tell you right now-
Supervisor Brown.
-that if your records were illegally accessed, I want to see some arrest. And if it's a felony, as Terry stated, uh-
Then get an audit done, Rob.
You, you have a guy back there doing the audit and I'm glad you appreciate how much he does for you because it's nice to have a partner in your blog that you can trust.
Rob, you don't trust the sheriff. Take him out of the audit picture. Bring in an outside independent-
So we know, so we, we know your suggestion and actually I, I would like to encourage-
You have the last word, I think, for Rob.
I'm not done with this yet, yet though.
Rob probably will get the last word as sort of that's how it works, but, but I would like to encourage people to make suggestions, so thank you for the suggestions. So, do we have others?
I have, no, I'm gonna, I'm not finished yet. I can assure you that if there was a felony committed, Bruce, adios. If there's a felony committed that the man back there who claims he's been working laboriously over this and making sure the public is protected, there would have been arrest by now. I got a phone call about him being a part of an anonymous threatening, life-threatening blog that was very detrimental to law enforcement. I found out who it was through very little effort. I went upstairs to the courthouse to find out what the true motive was behind his detest for the last sheriff, and I found it. It was very easy to access. Anybody's court records, including his arrest record, is accessible up there in the court. Those files are public information. It's not, not gathered illegally. He's still upset, apparently, over that, so, so that's how that happened.
So it's now 12:10 and this has gone-
Supervisor, actually, could inquire how many people are left?
Yeah, I did. How many people are left who want to speak? Three? Four? Four. Okay. So let's, don't rehash old stuff, please, keep going.
Kind of feel like I'm trying to get a accurate weather report here. Uh, my name is Bob Chalk. I'm a resident of Kelseyville and I've got over 20 years' experience as far as the administration of the law enforcement databases, so as I talk, I do have a little bit of experience in that. First of all, I want to say that I have respect for a sheriff or police chief who has the responsibility to administer such databases because it is a large responsibility. What I want to do is, uh, stay away from a lot of the stuff that's already been said and try to just focus on what the procedural process may better have been in this circumstance. And I just made a couple of notes as the sheriff was talking. He said that auditing has been going on for a long time, situations were still occurring. I can understand that auditing has been going on for a long time. How does that necessitate such an emergency response and shutting everybody down if this has been going on for a long time and things have not substantially changed? That's an issue that I would have a lot of concern with. That is no reason to summarily stop access to the database through the other agencies. He said that no public safety concerns were there. He would like to hear specific concerns as far as that goes, and I'm just gonna throw out a scenario on that. Because of the information that you've heard is critical as far as responding officers in the field having sufficient information when they respond for safety reasons, not only for themselves, but also for the, the public. For instance, a officer is going out to serve a search warrant one morning and it's a routine search warrant on the face of it. It's located on the street across from a school and he goes out to serve the search warrant with no other information available to him. If he had access to go into RIMS to check for information on the person and location where he's gonna serve the search warrant and found out that the person was known to have firearms and had been rather hostile in the past and perhaps would not be willing to go easily if a search warrant and arrest warrant were served, that would be critical information so that the officer could prepare properly, even if it meant to serve the search warrant at a time when children were not present around the school and if necessary, depending upon information, they may want to also evacuate the houses around in case the situation became, uh, very drastic to where they could be involved in shots fired. He says providing, uh, services per the contract, for the contract were done, uh, the cooperation must go beyond having the minimum basis of the contract satisfied. The contract should be looked at as a guideline for providing a service, not that that is the bare essentials that you should ever provide. He said all of the agencies were utilizing the RIMS as a investigative tool. Certainly, that is a benefit to all law enforcement agencies and the sheriff must be a resource for all of the law enforcement agencies in the county. The sheriff's office is the largest law enforcement jurisdiction within a county and must provide resources to the other allied agencies. In doing so, the RIMS is a very valuable tool that the sheriff can provide for the other agencies. He also said that he had researched the penal code last night for violations. Why is it that the drastic actions were taken and then the penal code was later reviewed? I would have done it the opposite as I believe that most would, that you would find the circumstances and facts before you take the actions, not take the action and then go out and try to find the reason why you took them. He also says that it wasn't appropriate for Lakeport Police Department to access the RIMS, but it has been allowed for two and a half years while he was the sheriff. Why is it that such drastic action was taken without some consensus and cooperation and working with the department heads from the agencies prior to that to try to resolve any Now, we've talked a lot as far as the access that the agencies have to the RIMS system and the RIMS system, and I'm familiar with it, Chief Clausen, it was November of 2006 when Clare Lake Police Department actually went online with it. The RIMS system has several different security levels for access to it, which can be instituted by individual basis. And that's probably the proper procedure in utilizing the RIMS system. And let's remember that RIMS is just a software system. There's a lot of other companies out there that provide the same or similar software system, so when we talk about RIMS, this is not a unique system through the Department of Justice.
Bob, how much more do you have?
Really?
Very shortly, otherwise my wife's gonna start hitting me.
Supervisor Comstock's gonna have to leave and we need to get this wrapped up.
I believe it would be best at this point that they entertain an idea that could be put in front of him, and I'll make three suggestions on that. I would make a suggestion that immediately the system be restored to the way that it was, that the sheriff work with the department heads to have a mutual agreement, understanding between them for future use of the database system, and that they set access levels that are responsive to the security of the system, yet allows for the best use of all information for public and officer's safety. And with that, I won't take any more time.
My name is Roger Shuto and I base my experience on 30 years as a chief or undersheriff. My number one concern is officer's safety. I've had an officer shot. I think that we should make every effort that we can to give the officer on the street every edge, and, uh, RIMS is a very important tool. This can be resolved as, if the sheriff would just make a decision to go back the way it was and at the same time make a good faith effort to resolve this problem, which is all the Department of Justice requires. Get our team together of chiefs and make a good faith effort to finish the audit, correct the problems, and to move on. I've had to make these decisions before and I've worked with the state and they're clear about that. They want a plan and they want, and they want a good faith effort, but we must give the tools that our officers on the street need. That's critical. And in closing, I, I recently had a, a unit that was a special investigations unit in Sonoma County that we did warrantless searches almost every day and we needed RIMS. Probation department always updated addresses and information and our offices were away from the other county offices. So this tool is credit to, critical to the day-to-day efforts of our law enforcement people. That has to be a priority. That has to be a priority. And again, until you've had an officer shot, and we have in this county, you've got to consider public safety number first. Do the audit, get back to business, and put a good faith plan together, and you can do it, and the sheriff can do it with that plan. Thank you.
My name is Walter Paddy. I'm a retired police chief, and I'll be very, very brief. I support the point of sharing information at all levels. It is in the best interest of law enforcement and the communities that they serve. In fact, with the two proposals that were mentioned here, I totally agree with as well, that they should sit down together across from a table, not exchanging emails or telephone calls, and come to some resolution on this. Because one of the most important things in law enforcement is the sharing of information and collaboration. And apparently, from what I'm seeing here, that's not being done at the moment. And the best example of sharing information and collaboration in my 79 years on this earth has been in the bombing in Boston, where federal agencies, all federal agencies, right down to local law enforcement, collaborated very, very closely in bringing the incident to an arrest situation. And it's a good example of how sharing of information and collaboration works. And I would hope that the presentation or the proposal that was made, that they do sit down across from the table and come to resolution on this. Information sharing is the best protective measure you can take for a citizen.
My name is Hiram Dukes. I was a paramedic in Humble County. I worked with the sheriff. If you want to see his statue, go up there at the courthouse and look at it. It's in bronze, him laying in the gutter bleeding to death. He had the most up-to-date information given him, and he died. We had another call that year of two people screaming. We got there, and 27 people were dead with one homicide. This is not a miracle cure. There is nothing in this whole world that's going to replace a smart, alert, and well-trained police officer.
Marcy Long, Kelseyville. I have four points. The first one is that you guys, the Board of Supervisors, you need to follow the law. And as Terry Larson pointed out, there are laws regarding access to RIMS, and I wish you would inform yourselves of it. Number two, I feel that this is a bunch of sour grapes. The people that didn't like Frank getting elected sheriff went to the probation department. There's a lot of people that are not cooperating with Frank, and they're trying to make it as difficult as possible. And I think calling this meeting today... Point number three, why would you do something so important with two members absent? This is ridiculous. The last point is, there's a system in place already, so why do you want to reinvent something when they already have an interoperating system that allows access to information? And if you need more information, as Sheriff Rivera said, you ask for it. Just because you've had something in the past illegally doesn't mean you have a right to have it illegally now.
Any last members of the public? All right. I'm going to close public and bring it back to the board. And actually, I would like to turn to county council at this moment and ask a couple of questions. First is, what actions... County Council, what do you see as the possible actions that the board could take, given that Sheriff Rivera was a constitutional officer and we have the contract with the county?
All right. I'm going to go through a few things, and I'll try to go through in recognition of Supervisor Comstock's departure as quickly as possible. Number one, the agreement with Sun Ridge Systems for the RIMS system is bound between the county of Lake and Sun Ridge, and it is for records management and jail management software to assist in managing the sheriff's department. So there's nothing in the county's agreement with Sun Ridge that contemplates the type of cooperation that has gone on for years among all of the various law enforcement agencies. So that document does not do very much in terms of the county's ability to change things. Now, of course, the county has its own entitlements and authority under the terms of this contract to change the terms, but you also must keep in mind that the control of the sheriff's department information, the sheriff's information that he maintains through this RIMS system is the sheriff's department's. And Government Code 25303, that allows your board to supervise the conduct of all county officers, still says very clearly that the section cannot be construed to affect the independent and constitutionally and statutorily designated investigative and prosecutorial functions of the sheriff and district attorney of the county. The board shall not obstruct the investigative function of the sheriff of the county, nor shall it obstruct the investigative and prosecutorial function of the district attorney of the county. So under the terms of state law, you are somewhat hamstrung as to what you can do with regard to accessing the sheriff's department information. That also impacts any call for some independent audit, because without the sheriff's approval and permission, your board has no independent authority to audit what is under the penal code 33100-13300 at sec, not available to you specifically. Now, under the California Constitution, Article 5, Section 13 provides that, "Subject to the powers and duties of the governor, the attorney general shall be the chief law officer of the state. It shall be the duty of the attorney general to see that the laws of the state are uniformly and adequately enforced. The attorney general shall have direct supervision over every district attorney and sheriff." So the attorney general does have. Now, I should say that both state and federal courts have looked at this issue. And even though you can't intrude upon, you can't obstruct the sheriff in terms of his law enforcement functions, his investigative and prosecutorial functions, you are still entitled to do what you did today, which is review and ask questions. And you're doing that on the basis of attempting to ensure public safety. Some of the things that you can do consequent to that review is develop some type of a task force or a committee or some type of a mechanism to try to work with all in law enforcement agencies. The one thing I did hear from all of the law enforcement agencies and from some of the people who were former law enforcement officers who came to speak today is that there does have to be that spirit of cooperation. I would suggest that perhaps no greater than in terms of working out an agreement. The sheriff has said that he has concerns about information security. The police department for the city of Lakeport Probation Department are concerned about officer's security, the efficiency of law enforcement operations, officer's safety, all of those issues. All of them are huge issues, and everyone needs to be able to voice those at the table. I would suggest that perhaps the Board of Supervisors might want to have one member of the Board of Supervisors participate. We'll invite the city, and to do it very quickly. As I said, since Sheriff Rivera said several times that he was amenable to that, the city of Lakeport Police Chief has said he is amenable to that. Probation Chief is amenable to that. It might be a good idea to strike while the iron is hot. As far as any suspected misuse or allegations of misuse, you have here the district attorney and the chief law enforcement official of the county, who is Sheriff Rivera. And certainly, they know who has direct supervision over them. So if there is something that is criminal of nature, it would, as they both can tell you, behoove them to request the attorney general to conduct an investigation into that. Your board can request it, but you do not work for the attorney general any more than I do. So it would be no different than a public request. The sheriff and/or DA, or they could call for it jointly, or perhaps all the law enforcement agencies would like to call for one, just to put all of this to rest. The one final thing I would note is with regard to the contract with the investigative service from two years ago, and Sheriff Rivera is right here, and I have no doubt he will not say otherwise. Sheriff Rivera secured the services of that company. I had never heard of them before. The initial agreement was a letter agreement that described the scope of work. I'm sure a Public Records Act request to the sheriff's department, or perhaps the auditor controller, would disclose that particular information. And your board may recall that when the sheriff's department went over the $10,000 limit, the sheriff's department had to come to your board to ratify essentially further action, further investigative action that was done. I can also tell you that that was a multi-part report that involved not just RIMS but also the issue, because the sheriff was concerned about some bad information that he felt was getting out about some of his law enforcement functions regarding an operation of the sheriff's department in Clearlake and a potential operation involving the Hills Angels. I think, and I may be incorrect about this, but the reason it went through my office was because the sheriff received a recommendation from the investigators, since oftentimes things in those reports contain confidential information or could impact the privacy rights of individuals, particularly criminal defendants. And that was the case in this situation. So I did perform those redactions. But as I said, this was not an investigation. Number one, I have no authority... If anyone in this county is unclear about anything, they should be clear on this. I have no authority over elected officials.
I wish you did, though. Apparently.
You give us the look occasionally, though.
That's all I've got.
So I guess at this point, I would like to ask the sheriff a couple of questions. One is, Sheriff, are you open to... First of all, I guess I'll just ask it point-blank. Are you open to opening the system as it was and rapidly putting processes in place with a task force of some kind in a spirit of cooperation? And then making the adjustments after that?
Repeat the question, please. I was in fact...
My question is, there seems to be some real concerns about officer's safety among these various agencies, and they seem to have access to a system that by tradition they've had access, not necessarily by specific statements in a contract, right? So they've had access to RIMS. And my question is, it seems to me you need to get that under control. Those are the reasons you took the actions you did. I'm wondering if there is a way to form a committee of the appropriate parties to, in a spirit of cooperation, come up with protocols for either access or access to the information and maybe not access to RIMS. But in the meantime, while that's being developed, restore the access to these departments so they have what they need right now.
First of all, the access... Let's just be real clear about this. The access to probation could be restored right now. Mr. Howe cares to tell me who he wants to have access, so that's not a problem.
Conversation between the two of you.
Well, I mean, I've sent several emails out, and I keep getting the same answer, which is I want everybody restored. So if he wants to have the information restored, that's fine, and we've also offered to input the probation information ourselves into RIMS. Concerning Lakeport Police, the answer is no, for the simple reason that subsequent to my actions, I found that there had been abuse. And I'm not going to go back, knowing that there's this abuse, and just say I'm going to trust again. I won't do that.
So the follow-up question I have is, are you open... I mean, the board can certainly ask the attorney general to conduct an audit, and perhaps we should, but it would come with a lot more weight if it came from the various law enforcement agencies in our county. So is it possible, since there has, in your view, there's been abuse, can we ask for an independent audit of the system?
First, I believe the county council said that the board could not. But setting that aside, I'd be happy to join the district attorney's office in requesting the attorney general to step in and do a complete audit. That would be very favorable, in my view, and I'd like to move forward with it as soon as possible.
So you can... Yeah, so...
Well, I want to join the district attorney and ask... I want the district attorney to join me in asking, because the district attorney in that last investigation refused to allow his district attorney investigators to talk to the investigators. So it's an exercise in futility if I don't have the cooperation of the district attorney's office.
It seems to me the attorney general can compel that, right?
Possibly.
So really, what you need...
If you're talking about, you know, Constitution, you have a Fifth Amendment right to not self-incriminate, so you could compel but refuse to testify. In this particular case, it was just not required of the department head.
But you've answered the question... I think you've answered my question, which is, you're open to asking for the attorney general to send in... to conduct an independent audit?
More than open. I welcome it, and I invite it.
Okay. All right. Anita, can the board request that of the sheriff and the DA, that they go ahead? We can make that request, can't we?
Make the request? You can't require it.
Obviously, we can't require it, but we can make the request, and that may be an appropriate action for us to take. How about, Sheriff Rivera, how about the task force committee concept that's been floated here? Are you open to...
I'm always open to talking to anyone.
Okay. Okay. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So, board members.
Well, Madam Chair, I would request that we ask the sheriff and the district attorney to invite the attorney general to begin this audit, and that we establish this task force of all of the agencies involved with a board member sitting on it if necessary.
And I agree with that, but, you know, I'd like to answer, go back to, you know, Marcy asked a question. Why are we here with only three board members and not all of them? The reason is, two of them are going to be out of town. There's no board meeting next week, and this is something that needs to be dealt with now, in my opinion. And I can guarantee you that those other two board members are equally interested in having... Just based on the work that I've done with them over the last 12 years or so, they're just as interested as we are in making sure that these other law enforcement agencies have access to the information needed to protect the public and themselves. So I would have been happy to have all of them here, but they're out of town for whatever reason, for their own personal reasons, and we don't have a board meeting this next week. So that's the reason we're doing this now. It's unfortunate that we can't... I don't believe that there are... There's some word games being played here. Abuses, inappropriate activity, illegal activity, nonsense. There's stuff that's going on that is out of the control of the sheriff, and that's what this is really about, about control. It's unfortunate that we've even come to this, but we have an obligation, even though the city of Lakeport is not under our jurisdiction, they are our responsibility, just like any other citizen in this county, to make sure that they're protected and they have the tools they need to make sure they can do their jobs effectively. We've had... Our law enforcement has always, always historically had a good relationship because we're limited in our resources. We're not San Francisco, where the sheriff calls home or came from. We are a very rural county with very limited resources. We have to use the SO, probation, LPD, CPD, CHP, parole, fish and game, parks. I saw parks represented here. We use every resource that we can to make sure that citizens are safe here. We've had our differences with both cities on some issues. We've, you know, this... We've hashed things out over South Main, over jobs lost, things like that. But when it comes to public safety, we have to remain united. We cannot turn this into a contest of whose you-know-what is bigger than whose. Apparently, we win. So with that, I think we need to move forward with this request for an investigation, an audit into this, and let's do what we can to restore... Get the tools back in place that we need to protect our citizens.
The one thing, Madam Chair, I would note is, of course, you should be prepared that the city of Lakeport has indicated that they may file legal action under the dispatch agreement. I can't hear you. The city of Lakeport has at least intimated that they would file legal action to enforce their interpretation of the dispatch agreement, so I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Well, given that we don't have any options...
Madam Chair, I have one really quick comment. In regards to the two supervisors not being here, Supervisor Smith is out of town, and Supervisor Farrington is getting married. Supervisor Smith had called me 10 minutes after 10. I have no idea what that's about, but I'm unable to communicate with him until this is over, so they'd be here if they could. We didn't choose to do this without him. This came up after we were already not going to be... This came up after we were already not gonna be meeting next week.
So as I see it, we can do three things. One is, we can ask the sheriff and the DA, and potentially the probation department, I guess, to invite the AG to begin a RIMS audit. Second is that we can ask the sheriff, DA, to participate in a task force with the chief of the Lakeport Police Department, chief of Clearlake Police Department, and a board member. Can we order a task force, or can we just ask?
You can create the discussion group.
And create a task force.
What I'd suggest you may want to do is, you can ask the sheriff if he would be willing to contact all of the law enforcement agencies and allow a board member to participate.
Okay, so that would be the first step. And...
You can create your own, of course, also, but when you're bringing in...
Yeah, what's the point? Yeah.
The problem is time, because one of the things that we're hearing from the city of Lakeport is time is of the essence, so it would be a good idea to try to hash this out quickly.
Well, and then the third thing that we can do is, we can make a request of the sheriff, and he can say no, right? So we can do that for both the task force or the discussion group, and we can do that for asking the sheriff to restore access to RIMS temporarily until the protocols are worked out. Yeah, I mean, for my, and I'm not sure what I'm hearing from the other board members, but for my part, I would say, number one, as a board, I think we should request the sheriff and the DA, ask them to invite the AG to begin an independent audit of the RIMS access. Second is, I would ask the sheriff and the DA and the probation department, along with the chiefs of the Lakeport PD and the Clearlake PD, to participate in a discussion group with at least one board member on resolving data access to RIMS. And then the third thing is, I would request of the sheriff, and it's his decision, obviously, but I would request of the sheriff that he temporarily restore access as it was until this is resolved.
Supervisor, refreshing, did you also want to put a kind of a time is of the essence statement in there, in your regard to the discussion group?
Well, obviously, I should, the, I can say time is of the essence. Here's another problem, I'm gone next week, so if it's another board member, we need to, either, if it's me, I would have to do it the week after, if it's another board member, we'd have to discuss that as well.
Supervisor Smith is back next week.
Oh, good. Supervisor Smith is here next week. A chair.
Madam Chair. And plus, he's involved in the chief's, he goes all the chief's...
Yeah, he's part of the association.
So we can vote to, since he's not here, we can volunteer him.
You can bind him to anything.
Excellent, that's perfect.
Oh, boy.
All right.
Madam Chair, if I may, I would totally concur with what you said, with one addition, we have another major law enforcement entity here in the county that's not been mentioned, but should be included in that task force, and that's the CHP. I think that it's very important that they be included. Now, they may shoot me for that, but I think it's quite important. They're not gonna do that.
That wasn't funny.
That was probably poor choice of words, but I believe it would be very important for them to be involved, as the sharing of information certainly needs to include them.
From a wording standpoint, County Council, is the word "task force" correct, or is it "discussion group"?
I think the whole point is just to arrange a meeting of all of these minds in order to effectuate a quick result. If everyone is truly willing to work this out, as long as their concerns are respected, then it should be, should be able to happen in short order.
Supervisor Comstock, did you want to make a motion?
Well, Madam Chair, I would move that the aforementioned conditions, that we put those in the form of a motion, as I proposed it, and that we, can we, and...
Need to send the letter indicating your...
Yes, the County Council would draft a letter on our behalf, and that we appoint Chairman Jeff Smith to be the board representative on that. Can we include that in the same motion? Okay. That is the motion, Madam Chair.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. I'm gonna clarify what the motion is. First, that we're asking the sheriff and the DA to invite the Attorney General to begin an independent RIMS audit, RIMS access audit. Second, that we are creating a discussion group of the law enforcement entities in Lake County, and include Supervisor Smith as a member of that group to resolve any protocol issues in terms of information access to RIMS. And third is that we're requesting the sheriff grant access to RIMS at his option while this is happening, so that law enforcement safety is preserved as this process is underway.
That perfectly states the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's it, thank you.